Damn, how are you?
I'm alright, I just uh.
Sure. Thank you.
Evening.
Evening, how are you?
Alright. Evening sir.
Evening.
Alright.
So you asked for those? That's the most recent maintenance records and I think there's a, there's a roll up sheet on one of those so. Pretty damn.
How are you?
Great, you're hanging on.
Great.
A fine day.
Beautiful.
Winter on your lap.
That it is. I will say, I just said in there, from my house, which is right by the elementary school, at the five sixty-eight, I was in two wheel drive on a pickup, no weight in the bed. I turned on five sixty-eight, had to put it in four wheel bed, so.
Oh, onto, onto.
Oh, white bear, onto five six, like white bear, I, I held on, but I am on five sixty-eight, it was a zoo. No, I hit.
Our guys in, well, beat the state today.
I just, I think they usually do. The only spot I had a little bit of a challenge was coming up, um, Zion from Apollo.
Okay.
And that's not, yeah, that's, that's always hard, right?
It's hard to even scrape back from the burn.
Yeah, it's, it's, you can't get that, you can't get the cloud out of there. Nice corner, so.
I guess that's the end of our series, management teams, teams.
I don't deal with towers anymore.
Well, I understand they didn't replace that guy.
He moved up.
Well, he's at the state.
Bro, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes, he did, he went to state.
He's the director of.
At this point, yeah, he was not, Brad Cosgrove's been the one that's hung around, that's who I deal with all the time.
From Harrisburg, right?
Brad lives in.
I know the name.
He's the EMS chief for tower.
Yeah, he does a PA task force.
Yeah, 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 I, I think he, wanna say Chester County, northern Chester County.
Yeah, he goes on the deployment.
Yeah. Um, he's, he's hung the most in the lot of things.
Well, I understand they pulled you out of, out of Oakland.
Yes.
The things we do for a point of work.
My wife said, nah. I don't almost go for late.
Got kids tonight? Got kids, uh, ended up staying at mom's house. Any trouble?
I have, yeah, I know.
Hmm?
Did you retire?
Uh-uh. I don't want to. Yeah, forget it. I need to do something and work this one.
I need to do something too.
Oh wow, I get it, but no, I'm not ready to quit.
I still haven't done anything.
No. Oh, yeah. Yeah. There was an accident on one seventy-six, it's turn one two. There's a truck or what? Just a little bus standing. Oh, that's that one. Yeah. It's a R E. Oh, he was off, there's a bus back there. Yeah. He was probably using that R E. We can say.
Uh, everyone who goes to school.
You know buses running.
Evening.
Salas there?
Good evening.
You told me, I think on Thursday, what's the thing I was just doing, I'm not ready.
Correct.
Same thing.
Just one more second. Robby. Hey, how are you?
Get rid of that very soon. Also, we have a.
Should, should we hit? We can go as far as.
Bobby's house.
We could, so I have a plan.
I've got a plan of mail.
Yes, I have a mail, and so I thought I sent, did I send it to?
The hallista. He's getting a piece of. I got hung up again.
And I went through and calculated the. That's a nice piece of. So then we have a maintenance value and all, and all, original value down. For construction, and now essentially a reduced number of ground.
That's a, that's the pen I got. That's the pen I got, which now, providing five hundred shares of our stock.
I mean, and we can do all of that.
Much, much.
That's a good. I don't know, nice. No, it wasn't, but it's good. I've doubled so far, that's all I care about.
Getting the plans.
Oh. Worked for them years ago.
Yeah.
Before I went, I worked in the, uh, central.
Our office knows more what's going on.
Right.
Once we get them, and we get close.
Yeah.
I think there's still a issue. Oh, what's that? Before we sign anything.
There is a certain. I mean, honestly, I was super. Yeah, and his phone, half a second's mark.
Oh my god.
Yeah.
All right, we were following January sixteenth, Robinson County, where's who do I need to be? Seven o'clock, we do a pledge allegiance to the moment of silence for all military personnel.
Pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Bitlair. Mr. Rowley.
Here.
Um, citizens concerned, anybody have a concern, yourself, name, address, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, seeing those citizens concerned, I'd like to ask about the meeting or the conduct following the, uh, January eleventh meeting. At eight thirty PM, our board came out of executive session, as you may recall. Eight thirty-five, our solicitor had left the building, um, with some of the general public. At eight thirty-nine, I left the building, and at eight forty-eight, our manager supervisor, sitting to your left and to my right, um, proceeded to the garage area. They returned at eight fifty, uh, eight forty-eight, um, in the garage at eight fifty-seven. Were in this public meeting as three supervisors and our manager. And I'd like to know the purpose of that. Can you lighten this over?
Um, that was, uh, Rich, your advice of, uh, an issue with, uh, road crew member.
So you're saying you had an executive session without inviting me?
Wasn't an executive session.
Well, what was it? You had a meeting in the garage without the pub, no, you didn't notify me.
He did, he said he called you the next day.
The next day, I'd like to be notified at the time. We just had an executive session a few minutes earlier. Nobody called me, so you went out, did you, and did you come back in session as a meeting?
That meeting was over.
So you just go into the garage and meet when you want, without notifying all the supervisors?
Well, there was people here and, and we, I didn't know.
There was Mr. Steve here and someone else who left.
Well, I know, we wanted to go over some stuff for the meeting tonight, and then.
Okay, so in addition to, in addition to personnel matters, you went things, what did we go over for tonight?
To make sure what's on the agenda, make sure the agenda's clear.
And I, and I was excluded from that.
But I've al- already talked to Rich many times over the last months about verifying what's gonna be on the agenda.
Three supervisors in a garage with our manager, eliminating one supervisor.
There was no deliberation, there was no motions made, there was no decisions made, there was no action.
It sounds like there was decisions and discussions on this very agenda.
There wasn't.
Our chairman just set so.
We wanted to make sure what's on the, I've done this, I did it last night after the stewarding report last night.
I'm not concerned with the support, I'm concerned.
He notified us of this and said he was gonna call you the next morning when we left.
I'm concerned that this board is functioning improperly. Mr. Orlando, might you send some light on three supervisors in the garage with our manager, after a public meeting, after an executive session just occurred a few minutes prior? Can you, can you eliminate, illuminate the law a little bit for me?
Shouldn't this be the jam?
I'm talking about these, no, we're talking about a public concern, and we'll get to the next agenda item on number, number three, too, short enough. We have three supervisors in the garage, three minutes after you leave, with no call to me, I have a cell phone, it works. No call to me, with our township manager talking about items on this agenda. And the only item, one of the items that I saw and I noticed was item three, which I'm objecting to right now. So, so.
That, that was, that was way before.
So. That was discussed at workshop.
That wasn't, that wasn't discussed, and, and, that, he told us about an issue with the road crew. Said he was gonna reach out to you the next day, that's all that happened. Nothing else happened in that.
Thirty minutes to take that long.
The rest of the time, you, we, we, we had conversation about hunting, about him.
We told you. Hunting, well, could you, could you include me, Mr. Rhodes, on hunting? I'm an avid hunter, could you include me on hunting?
And his, his military.
What was the harm in calling me? Okay, what was the harm in following the rules?
You also left a room within ten seconds of the meeting.
No, I packed up my camera, my YouTube camera, my YouTube camera, why can't we be more organized if we have stuff to discuss in executive session?
And here's the fence, he looked for you. And here's the fence, he looked for you.
Make a list and discuss it.
We did.
So, so, so why, why weren't we discussing what's happening in executive session?
Just, well, a quorum of the supervisors that need to discuss township to, to business should be, uh, public unless it fits within one of the exceptions of the sunshine act. That's the rule. Uh, whether or not, under the Smith versus Richmond Township case, I think the issue is whether or not there are deliberations or discussion, to the extent that that occurred and it was not an executive session topic, uh, that would not comply with the sunshine act. To the extent, let me finish, you asked a question, my turn. To the extent that information is provided, um, if there's no discussion, uh, if there's no, um, communication with regard to anything that's activity, for instance, if there's information provided, nobody says anything, I think the Smith versus Richmond Township case says that's okay. Uh, it's not, I agree that it is not a good policy to have discussions without all of the supervisors participating. To that extent though, to the extent that there is, that doesn't mean that every time the manager opens his mouth, you all have to be present. Uh, that's not the law, never has been the law. Uh, that also doesn't mean that if you're not all in one room, and he were to reach out to each one of you individually, nothing wrong with that. Perfectly permissible. It's when you're all together, and a quorum of the board is present, okay? Even then, if it's an executive session item, it's proper, uh, although to the extent that it is not, um, uh, it violates the sunshine act. And it, it always, uh, to the extent that information, as Mr. Rhodes was saying, if that's what occurred, probably not a violation. If there was discussion, uh, then it certainly could be. I don't know what was said, not said, or otherwise. I can only react to the question that's been asked.
Our chairman, you done?
Yes.
Okay, our chairman has said that there was discussions on the agenda, there were discussions more than that. There is no excuse for eliminating a supervisor, none. We had an earlier executive session, I didn't rush off, Mr. Rhodes, I didn't rush off, the meeting was over, we adjourned. And then somehow magically, we wanna go talk about, there was no announcement there was an executive session till I raised the issue. Now, I'd like to know what was discussed pursuant to the sunshine act. I haven't heard anything, except hunting, really?
No, I, I just told you, he told us about a road crew issue, said he was gonna address it Tuesday in executive, that was it. We talked hunting, we talked his military background, he was telling stories about, about his time in Iraq.
Why don't you, well, was there any thought of calling me if it was such a major issue?
He stated that, that you had left, he looked for you, you had left, and that he was gonna call you tomorrow to tell you about the road.
Well, that's not good enough, so.
Well, did he call you?
The next day? What good's it then? What, what the heck good is it then? None. The sunshine low, clear and free, no doubt.
That's not what I just meant.
Well, I, I suspected it, I suspected you would, Mr. Orlando. There's no. There's no excuse for being rude.
There was no deliberation, there was no discussion about an action, there was no discussion about anything but, I have an item I'm going to bring to you on Tuesday heads up. The end.
What was that item?
I don't think we should discuss that here, it was personal.
That was the road crew issue.
And then when we did return upstairs.
There was, there was any discussion around, he just told us he was gonna be addressing.
When you returned upstairs, you used the men's room, you came in here for another hip hour.
Continuing our discussion with his military stories.
It's all, it's, it's all on video, folks. It's all, it's all, it's all on video, not the men's room, the public, coming and going, it's all on video.
What video?
Chief, would you care to elaborate my Act twenty-two request?
Yeah, um, Mr. Supervisor Billard filed an Act twenty-two request for the video based on information that he had. So, it went to my open records officer and we honored that request. So the video, the video that's involved.
So with that, you also, you know, we came back up here and then we're in here for at least another twenty to twenty-five minutes discussing like.
Absolutely, talking about hunting, right?
Talking about hunting.
Correct.
We should get the move on here, but over the years, I mean. Chris, I'm, I'm just saying, the examples I would give, you know, when we're signing checks, we sit here and walk and shoot the shit. I mean, and when it's warm weather, I mean, over the years, Harold, myself, Galen will be out in the parking lot for half an hour or more talking about whatever, talking about my father-in-law, whatever. So I guess from this point on, we just leave and don't.
No, you sign your checks and don't discuss other business, you don't sneak off to the, to the garage to discuss other things. You don't sneak off to the garage to discuss other things. I'm not interested in what happened for ten years, Chris, this is a new day.
No, but the new day is, we can still, can't, I guess we can't sit and shoot the shit, is that what, is that what we're getting at?
That's not what I'm saying.
Well, you can shoot and shoot the shit, you don't have to go back to the garage, you do it.
There was residents, there was residents in this room, as according to executive, we always leave this room to go downstairs, so we left the residents in here, we walked away from them to have our little.
I mean, I, I mean, that's all for, so we're just gonna get out.
It would have happened in here if we were alone.
Item three. I, I just wanna mention that, I, I, as I recall, you can have an executive session anytime, as long as you announce it at the next meeting, what it was and what it was for. And you, I, would you agree with me, and you contact all the supervisors? I mean, as, as a matter of course.
I was, I was agreeing, I'm saying that they, they can have an executive session.
Item three, the vacancy board vote, there is no vacancy board this evening. This is not properly on the agenda, Mr. Orlando, for any vote for a vacancy. There is no vacancy board that has been constituted.
That's a board.
On the agenda, on the agenda, it is a board of supervisors vote, that's not what this says. This is a vacancy board vote, there is nothing on the agenda, is it the Coleman case, Mr. Orlando, that we talked about? That, that has to do with the Sunshine Act? What, what is the most recent case you gave us on, on the agenda? This is not on the agenda for tonight, appointment of a supervisor, there, there is no vacancy board.
It's not a vacancy board, it's the vacancy board of supervisors vote, it's not a vacancy board.
It says, it says vacancy board vote. So, it says vacant, it doesn't say board of supervisors vote on the vacant position, I mean, it's clear.
That's what it says.
Missing a comma.
Yeah, it's missing a comma, that's right.
No, it's missing what it really is, it's a vacancy board vote, there is no vacancy board.
We have a vacancy, there's missing a comma, it's a board vote.
It's not missing a comma, it's, it's not even proper. So, I, 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 I mean, I object to the proceeding, this, this is not on the agenda. This meeting needs to be properly, we didn't learn anything from earlier this year, we really didn't learn anything.
So, what's your thought on the, the title of number three?
It's not the title, Chris, it's, it's not on the agenda. What, from, from three days, we can get into that another time, in terms of when it was supposed to be put on there, it's not on.
I disagree. Hey, first of all, as a result of the most recent municipal election, the vacancy exists as soon as Mr. Golo, if they elected, each term, he was chose. Everyone, I don't know what was announced in your, uh, during your reorg. But clearly, there is a vacancy, the board of supervisors has the power to, eh, within thirty days of the existence of the vacancy, to elect a, or appoint a supervisor. I believe, I don't know what you said before, but clearly, um, the, if your argument, Tim, is that because this says vacancy board vote, that there's no vacancy board, and that that means that the rest of it isn't on the agenda, I disagree with that. I think the rest of the agenda makes pretty clear what it is that the board intends to do tonight. I don't know why you would object to that. Obviously, a, an agenda for the board of supervisors would not be the vacancy board, uh, agenda. If this were the vacancy board agenda, I think it would say vacancy board agenda at the top. That's all I can say.
And, George, no surprise, I disagree with that opinion. When, when, when did this board set the parameters for these letters? I never got an answer, don't ask him, for these letters.
The answer was or wasn't, any, every, people have heard of them themselves, we wanted to announce it, and I think at the workshop, you didn't want to.
How does somebody hear it on themselves?
Harold is here all the time, he would have known, Joy would have known.
Harold, how did you find out about letters? Now, you're pointing to someone that I'm not sure I recognize, you're pointing to someone to your left, sir.
I, I found out from what Chris, I've conversated with Chris here.
My name is, my name is Chris Rothman, I, I also ran for the election.
Right.
And what is your question?
My question to you is, you informed Mr. Steve to submit a letter of, of interest or something, what did you base that on?
He just told me that the vacancy board was gonna do it, I think you said, uh, they were gonna make an announcement, reorg, to do it at the workshop. That's what I recall he said, but that's all he said.
Who told you, did you have any discussions with the Rothman, with any of my colleagues here about the vacancy at any time?
Well, sure.
Okay, when was the last, when was the last?
I ran alongside Mr. Gulo, so we could obviously talk.
Okay, and he told you to submit a letter of?
He did not.
Okay, how'd you do that?
We discussed what past practice had been, when, I guess, I don't know if I'm gonna get his, his name right, Freddie Love was on the board. And he explained to me what happened when he was here, and when he left, how it happened, and he had said, I'm assuming that it would probably operate in a similar fashion.
Did, did he explain to you that Mr. Love passed away in office? This vacancy was created by my colleague, I'll say skullduggery.
No, I'll be, I'll be honest with you, that didn't matter to me.
It, it doesn't matter to you that?
That, that, that particular situation didn't matter, I was told that this was probably the way this happened years ago, that if there were interested parties, that what was gonna happen was people would email the township manager if you're interested.
Not the way that happened, not the way we decided to happen.
Well, it was an opinion two months ago. Decide so the board can move forward. There was no direction of what to do, he asked me, how do you think this is going to go? And I said, well, I can tell you, last year, this is how it went. Am I incorrect? Kinda stopped right there?
Yes.
And, that was that. There was no direction, there was no, the board said, it was, this is what happened when Love passed away.
Did you ask him to submit a letter of interest?
Did I?
Yes.
No, I did not.
I don't know, was this on the website, Mr. Steve, you, you go on that website, did you see any of this on the website?
No, I didn't, but I was really looking for it.
Mr. How, is this, was this the one on the website in the last month?
I don't know where it's, I don't know if it's required either.
I didn't ask if it was required, I asked if we would over, overdo informing the public. Could we inform the public, could we have real transparency and get as many people interested as possible? That was my question, why, why it's the website? We seem to struggle with that.
Well, we did discuss it at the workshop, not the workshop, the reorganization about putting in order and doing stuff, and you did, you weren't interested at the time.
I was very interested. What I ask is, this procedure is not the same as someone who resigns in office, when someone dies in office. It's a different procedure that this board needed to have a discussion on, and it, it really never occurred. It never occurred, unless that was the discussion on January eleven.
Is there any other, Sister Lynn, or any other procedure that we should follow for this?
To my knowledge, second class township code says nothing more than the board of supervisors can act within thirty days of the existence of a vacancy. And if the board either is unable or unwilling to act, within fifteen days after that, the vacancy board convenes and acts. And the vacancy board is this board plus the vacancy board chairman. And the only difference between that meeting and this one is that the vacancy board chairman chairs that meeting. That has to happen within forty-five days of the vacancy. And to the extent that neither party, uh, neither meeting results in the appointment, then it goes to court. And that is exactly what happened with this board last year, I believe.
I guess we're at number three, so according to Sister Lynn, we can do that.
Nominate for appointment?
No, I have a question.
Preserving my objection, I nominate Harold Steve.
Do we just, no, that's one question, are we, should he make a motion to appoint someone, or he make a motion for a nomination? Well.
My motion, my motion's on the floor.
But what, but I'm just saying.
My motion is, I ma- I, I made a motion to.
Are you making a point?
Yes, I nominate him for appointment, if there are other nominations, I add, then we'll decide. And we should have a discussion on that.
The, Robert, the, I don't know if the board ever adopted Robert's rules, Robert's rules is a little, um, unclear, at least to my reading of it. There are several different processes, I don't think there's any required format that you follow. So one of those processes is, everybody can make nominations, and then you can discuss the nominations. I think that the bottom line, whatever you do with regard to nominations, whatever you do with the, those people that may be interested, I think you can hear from people from the floor, people that may have submitted these letters that it seems to refer to on the agenda. I think you can do any of that, or none of it, I think, but, but when you do act, I think, uh, Tim is correct, you have a motion, there should be a second to the motion, and then there should be a, uh. There should be a vote, and when a majority of the board is, brings its consensus, I believe, that should be your appointee. So then, I think that's to be scored.
So if we do a nomination, it's just a point and a second, you don't need to do, you don't need to do.
A nomination, you don't need, I think, the, the way that Robert says is, to make a nomination, you don't need a second. But if you're gonna, if you make a motion to appoint, uh.
You made a nomination.
And I second it, so any other nominations for this vacant position?
Hold on, I need to look at Bryan Stein. I'll second that.
So we have two nominees?
Are there other nominees?
Yeah, anybody else wanna make a nomination? Anyone wanna make a motion to close the nominee? All right, I don't know if anyone would like to make a motion to close.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second both of them. And I need discussion. I think we should hear from the two nominees. Or Julie, you're in the front row, so you can, your first name and address.
Name's Joy Bryan Stein, nine sixty-one Rock Hall, Lur, Burb, PA. What would you like to know, Mr. Bitler, because that seems to be more the issue than anything else? Not who's qualified, not who cares about the community, but, but, no.
No, you're asking me a question, I'm trying to answer your question, you said, what else would I like to know? Why do you think you're qualified for this job when the voters rejected you multiple times? You didn't even run for office last time. Why do you think you're qualified?
My answer, number one, I was, you stopped the motion last year, you pulled this last year, you made sure it went over thirty days, it was split two-two, nobody could do anything. At that point, it went to the court. I then put my nomination in, also requested we put it on the, on the board of supervisors. But we went to court, we didn't do what the community wanted, we did what we were forced to do because no one could come to an agreement. So, my answer would be, Mr. Bitler, I sat on the board for six years, I have a good understanding of what the community wants and needs, and I have absolutely nothing to gain from sitting on the board, nothing. I don't wanna do anything in the township, I don't need anything from the township, and I'm not likely to do any real estate. So, I would say, I'm slightly more concerned about what the community wants than what I as a person here want.
Is that, is that it? No, I think she deserves a response, she answered my question. You've mischaracterized, you've mischaracterized everything. The last election, the second meeting vote getter was Mr. Steve, you didn't even run for that, so you didn't even run. And what the judge said on that vacancy was, by, I don't wanna put words in, in the judge's mouth, he was best qualified till the next election. What did Mr. Gulo do? The next election, he takes two spots.
What does that have to do with me?
Defeating the judge's, essentially defeating the judge's logic. Mr. Steve got the second votes.
What does that have to do with me?
Mr. Steve is contemporaneous.
That's Harold, that's what's, what, you have to say, Harold?
The only idea I have. Oh, it's Harold Steve, thirty-seven hundred Main Street. I, I've served on a board with three of you, so you, you know my abilities and how I, I function. I've had some interactions with Scott. You know, I served on a, a couple of different boards, uh, through the township. I've, uh, been on one of those boards, I think fourteen years, and, and another one twelve. So, I, I, I have an interest in this one. I'm not, I also have no real estate dealings in the township. Uh, and I have nothing to gain by the thing, and as a matter of fact, I, I've, uh, didn't even take my pay for the last, most of the last car I drove.
Hey, thank you, any questions for Harold, man? Okay.
Make a motion to appoint Harold Steve.
Harold, second, or Mr. Golo?
No.
Mr. Bitler?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
No.
Oh, but yes. Any other motions?
Make a motion to appoint to Bryan Stein.
All right, your second?
I'll second, no motions.
Call Mr. Golo?
Yes.
Mr. Bitler?
No.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Now, Julie. I pondered this for a while now, and your letters came in, and I'm torn. I do not want this to continue like it did last year, and go to the courts and whatever, because Mr. Bitler is correct, because Harold, what, you know, the judge did say Harold's more qualified, and he's been on the board, so I will agree with that. I will just nicely say, I'm just concerned, um, I'm very concerned, but I can't let this go, because because of vacancy board, you're probably picked anyway, and I refuse to once again cause the township extra money and go to the courts. Personally, I mean, yes, I will say in public session, Harold does have more experience and all that other stuff, but to end it tonight, I will go yes.
I will be good.
All right, so correspondence, we got our letter, was this the bamboo letter?
It is, sir, I left it in here because it contained his address and personal information, rather than having that on the website, so if you'd like to, we do that through the last piece in that packet, he just had, letters of interest that provided.
Now, does this bamboo restrict vision somewhere?
It does not, sir, however, I do believe that the bamboo could cause an issue for our snowplow operations during the wintertime, uh, if it's right along the roadway. It is within the right of way, so a heavy snowfall could that push that over and again impact our snowplow operations or emergency operations. Ops are responding to a scene somewhere in that local vicinity, so, uh, at least back to the roadway, my认为they can be that we.
Well, the thing is too, I mean, it is an invasive species, which we shouldn't have been, right, so. So, are we asking, are you asking for us to just have the?
Just want to make sure you're aware of the letter, and we'll, we'll take it.
Is there any validity to his grandfather?
I don't think so.
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't see anything in there that were grandfathers somewhere.
And, and my practice is invasive species.
Correct, and it goes back to that.
I will say on your note, one time, I have seen it fall over where it impacted travel on the roadway. It's hard to cut, it's nearly impossible to cut. I'm not saying take it all out, unless everybody agrees, but at least within a point that it cannot fall into the roadway.
And, and to remain trimmed back, I think would be our, our purpose here, uh, one of the things about bamboo is it will grow, and it grows, uh, prolifically, uh, and will continue to grow, and it stretches underground, so we, we have to make sure we're aware of. So we, we have to make sure we're aware of that and we may be forced.
Okay, and you have anything else with correspondence? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board. First, I have my agendas discussed, solicitation order, we discussed that briefly for the workshop. I did reach out to Sister Orlando, which the board was copied in the email. And he did state that the resolution was not an effective way to address the ordinance the way which we want. So I will be directing a solicitation order, which I'll provide to the board at the February workshop meeting.
So you could give some consideration to another form of solicitation, solicitation. Happened just this week in the township regarding going around and placing things in people's mailboxes. I believe that's a federal issue and we may wanna incorporate that for.
Like flyers or something?
Yes, solicitations of their businesses inside the mailbox.
Okay.
I have that covered for you and I'll get that to you. Or maybe you could make a call on that issue.
Is it legal to place it on the outside, like in the flyer?
The outside, yes, but not on the inside.
So I get a lot of outside, I'm a security guy.
And I am being reviewed with report. What that is, is obviously when I submit my reports this month, you received the December twenty twenty-three report and also the yearly report. So I just wanted to take a minute or two of your time, if I may, and go over some of the comparisons to twenty twenty-two from twenty twenty-three. Our local complaints, which are basically our calls, are up nineteen percent from twenty twenty-two. Total arrests were up thirty-eight percent, most of which for some reason. Our property stolen in the township was down seventeen percent. Property recovered was down forty percent. And our property destroyed was down fifty-two percent. Accidents, the interesting thing I saw was we were down six tenths of a percent in comparison to twenty twenty-two. However, our injuries were up fifty-nine percent. And that's a little bit of alarming stat there.
From accidents?
From crashes, yeah, their injuries from accidents. Criminal investigations, which are UCR reportable crimes, they were up four percent. And the thing that I'm proud of the officers for doing, the cases cleared that are UCR were up thirty percent. So they cleared out thirty percent of the cases more so than twenty twenty-two. Just running down, DUIs were up sixty-seven percent, drug violations up sixty-three percent. Thefts were up forty-four percent, burglaries, there was no change. Criminal mischief was down thirty-three percent. Domestics were up eighteen percent. Unfortunately, child abuse was up also eighteen percent. And our fighting disorderly conduct calls, they were down fifteen percent. So I just wanted to provide the board with some additional comparison stats there.
Thank you.
And I have nothing else, plus the board something in me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we got finance, just under A, monthly expenses. Make a motion to accept the billings. And I'll make a motion to accept the monthly expenses. Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Golo?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
No.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, but yes. Anyone wanna make a, make a motion to accept the treasury report?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Roll call, Mr. Golo?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Are we going to make the changes and get a, instead of the same treasury report that we've had for the last decade? Get it in the form of a proper treasury report? I suggested this last minute.
Yeah, if you could get the.
Yep.
Poten- potential template, sure.
So you want me to do the?
Well, if you have an idea that you think it's better, sure.
I'll vote no.
And Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, yes. And anyone wanna make a motion to accept the survey report?
I'll make a motion.
All right, well, and Harold, I'm sorry, I have a question.
As I pointed out last night, I don't believe that's accurate. There's people that I know that don't pay the third bill, they don't appear anywhere on that list.
Well, I mean, Rich is looking into that, so.
This is something that I've lingered on for years and don't seem to be able to get our, our grasp around it. Years.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second to accept the survey report?
I'll second, Roger.
Why don't we, Mr. Chairman, why don't we wait till we get the proper report? And then, why, why adopt something that we know is.
Well, not as I wish to accept the report we have.
Well, I don't wanna accept something that's core there, so I'll vote no.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, but yes. And we have somebody here for Sky Towns?
My plan, Phil, is we do not. There was really nothing to present other than the report.
Yeah, I guess. All right, well, then in our possession is some August minutes from board workshop in December fourteen. We are super guarded, we're very busy in nineteen. And anyone like to make a motion to approve everything on this, the minutes, expenses and reports in our possession?
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, Mr. Golo?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Hi.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, but yes. All right, are you in here?
Good evening, Board. I circulated my report previously. The first item here on the agenda is the Deeds Homestead two subdivision. This is a residential subdivision plan. The most recent review letter is dated December twentieth, it's in your packet, it was part of my report. And as I anticipated, your planning commission did make a recommendation at their meeting to the board to consider final plan approval of this plan. I do believe there's somebody here to present this to you, so with that, I'll turn the floor over, Mr. Hoffert.
Good evening, Board. Again, my name is John Hoffert and I'm representing the Deeds Homestead two subdivision. Would you all clarify what plans out before you? Just so that we can see an actual showing.
We gotta do a recommendation on this, right? This is interesting.
Correct.
Recommended. I mean, I, I, for me, I don't need to see any, anything else.
If you, if you don't need to see anything more.
But if you want.
I mean, I defer to my colleagues, if you wanna see it, we, we've got a recommendation.
We got a recommendation.
Thank you for coming, I guess.
Thank you very much. For the most part, the Deeds family, thank you very much. It's good you entertained the joy of playing fun and trouble of this project. I am here in case I had to take a college course.
I understand, I was thinking about that.
If the board has any questions, I'm here to answer to the best of my ability.
Again, this was a recommendation by your planning commission. The review letter dated December twentieth has very few comments, majority are really signing, sealing these plans.
Is this final plan?
Correct.
It doesn't seem that complicated, or am I missing something?
You're not missing anything.
Then you need a motion to add that.
Absolutely.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Golo?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Board, thank you. How about I see you, thank you.
I'm safe.
Second item under engineering is the twenty twenty-four street work. As you may recall, we had prepared drafts of both the construction contract and maintenance contract for the twenty twenty-four street work, which has been reviewed with your crew chief. We are looking to pave. We were looking to pave Proud Foot and Mounts Road. And we are looking to oil and chip Golf Course Road. Again, we would bid that maintenance contract in sections to protect us in case we'd need to remove a section to stay within budget. At this point, I would ask for permission to move this to advertising, finalize the contract with the task of staff and advertise at a minimum for the oil and chip work, because the sooner we get that out, the better, better pressure.
Who's like that motion today? Please.
I'll make the motion for that.
What's the motion, Jeff?
Motion to, you said get out the oil and chip, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Get out the oil and chip, piece of the road work for twenty twenty-four.
And, and that's intended to be a double application on Golf Course Road. If we can get its entirety, great. But again, we'd bid sections as alternatives.
Have a motion, you have a second? I'll second. Roll call, Mr. Golo?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, but yes.
Thank you. We will move that, as I said, finalize that spec unit to advertising. The construction spec is also in a draft form. I don't believe that's quite as time sensitive, so let's get this first one moving and then revisit the second one with Barry and Rich and I. Okay? Next item is Rock Hollow Road Bridge. I did receive an email update today from Whitman Engineers. I was not in the office when I received it, so I screenshot it. The erosion and sedimentation control plan and GP eleven applications are ready to submit. Mr. Whitman is asking that I submit them on behalf of the township, I have no issue doing that. So I will get on that right away. He has temporary construction easements ready and is working on the descriptions and just title verifications and then he will be getting that over to Mr. Orlando's office. We will need temporary easements from the adjacent property owners to perform this work. So that's what he's speaking about there. So that's the current update. I do believe that he's generally on schedule. If you have any questions, greater than that, let me know. I'm happy to ask Mr. Whitman and bring them back or send an email to him, copy the board, so. That's where we're at there. With items D and E, these were previously discussed at the workshop meeting by Gene. First item D is Quaker Hill, this is Quaker Hill Phase Five roadway dedication. This is not ready for any board action yet. To give you a general idea of where we're at, all the final construction has been completed with the exception of some plannings in the basins, which will happen in spring. I am still waiting on a final as-built plan, so I can verify the legal descriptions for the public right-of-way and easements, which needs to be done. They have them provided to Gene, so he can get the legal documents going. But we need to verify the as-built subversive subscription, so that's what we're currently waiting on, but that's getting close. Item E is, it's, they will hear is Green Hills dedication. That's not quite correct. It's actually Green Hill's final plan approval is really what it should be. If you recall, this plan went to construction with a preliminary plan approval and approved NPDs permit. Where we are at here is Gene's office has prepared, I think they have received them today, drafts of some of the final improvement agreements, improvement agreements. We are reviewing final plans. We have gone back and forth with the developer now, I think we're at iteration number three or four, to make sure that those plans are correct and ready for you to sign. So, once we get to that point, we will be seeking final plan approval for that and all these final legal agreements can be completed. If you recall, that's the one that was a source of issue for us over the past year, so.
Mr. Rhodes, were those iterations via email? Is that?
Um, they.
Were there any more mails?
Yes, there were.
Could you forward that to my township leader?
I certainly will.
Appreciate that.
Final item I have is not good news. The road department has been keeping an eye on an active situation on Zion Road. This is a culvert near Buck Hollow. And in some of the most recent rainstorms, we have noticed some significant deterioration on the upstream side of this culvert. It appears that some of the water is going around the culvert pipe itself, reaching through the road bed, either finding its way into the pipe at some point under the road or just reaching straight through. Again, we've been keeping an eye on this, waiting for maybe some low water levels here, but we haven't seen that yet. I am asking that the board consider authorizing our office to begin the permitting process for a culvert replacement. I did reach out to DEP, thank you, to investigate emergency permitting, which we've utilized in the township in the past. I think we had a heavy rain several years back that washed, completely washed out several of our culverts. I haven't received an answer yet. DEP's processes have changed since then. I sent an email and it immediately bounced back to me telling me to file a request through their online service. So, looking into that process, I'm not sure that this is gonna qualify as an emergency, since the road is still passable. But one way or another, we need to start planning for this culvert replacement. And the lead times we're seeing, as Gunheart Road is evident of, on these permits, is, is significant now. So again, I'd be seeking board permission to, to start that process of looking to replace this culvert.
I'll make the motion to grant approval, start the permitting process. I'll second it.
Roll call, Mr. Golo?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, but yes. Thank you. I believe that's all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions.
Did I see something in the packet regarding some issues with, what is it, Rock Hollow Woods or something? The education facility?
So they had, if you recall, our discussion there was that they were going to file an amended plan.
Right.
And they have done that, that was submitted to your planning commission, I believe that review letter is in my engineers report. The planning commission had some questions on that application and we did request some revisions to that plan.
Your review letter seemed to be, they were, I'll say, derelict in what information they were requesting, or am I missing something?
No, I, I think I would classify it more as a misunderstanding between what the folks at Rock Hollow Woods had requested of, of Mr. Hoffert, who was here earlier, and what the township was seeking. But that was clarified at the planning commission.
What we would be seeking would be what they agreed to do, and it seems to me the plans are different. Am I, am I overstating the obvious or no?
No, so, so what we had advised is in order to close this process of an active land development plan, we would need an amended plan of record to release the standing escrow that we currently have.
Well, I don't know when an approval was given for changes.
There's, there's, there's no changes, they've just simply stopped constructing. The, the plan that they had built is what was on the approved plan, they've simply just have not constructed.
Was it planning, was it saying a little bit?
So the planning commission's request was for more information. They felt like there was some things missing from the plan. They had some questions with respect to existing septic areas, what was tied to which buildings. So that's being clarified. They also requested, I believe, if my question is correct, that they consider installing the landscaping, which was on the approved plan. And also consider potentially annexing this property, this, this less than two acre property to the adjoining properties, which they now own in the common ownership, thereby getting rid of an existing non-conforming lot by, by lots. So, all of that went back with Mr. Hoffert to the Rock Hollow Woods folks and we anticipate revised submission.
It doesn't seem appropriate to me. Which, can you explain your conclusion? It seems to me we had a plan that was approved. And when something's approved, I'm not so sure, not having seen it, that when you eliminate things from that, other things were based on that. So I'm not so sure that the overall chemistry of that works. I don't understand why we're at the point where we're still talking about septic systems as well.
The existence.
Does it normally go this long? Really, really?
Do construction?
No.
Or?
From this, this, this has been years, hasn't it?
Yeah, but they only started building eighteen months ago. If that, so this, this was a standing approved plan before the township for quite some time, before personally I got involved. And they had this escrow and basically an approved plan and they started building. Since the time the plan was approved, I don't know the exact timing, they've acquired land outside of what this. Since the time the plan was approved, I don't know the exact timing, they've acquired land outside of what this project was, have stated that they no longer need the building, which was really the basis for the plan, the land development plan, as well as a zoning hearing board application. So, I, it sounds to me like their needs have changed. They no longer wish to construct this building, and they are seeking a way to close out the project without constructing what's left to be built. Anything else? That's all I have. Okay, Mr. Orlando.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing further to report. We talked about this at the workshop. I am working on revising the draft ordinance, and this is what I have to do for you, how to circulate to all the board members.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Orlando, before we move on, you'll see at some point here, under new business, we had discussed Zoom. There's some recent case law relating to Zoom and municipal. I don't know if you've seen that, but my intent would be to share that with you. Particularly when, Donalathewan County is our, particularly when a township undertakes Zoom, it undertakes certain responsibilities. Zoom was brought in here for particular reasons at a particular time, and in my opinion, that's no longer necessary. And when you have competing forms of advertising, and you have links, you have things that go down, the case held, I believe, that the action part of the board was undone. So when I get a little better grasp on that case, I'll certainly share that with your office. It certainly gives me a little cause for concern. I don't share my colleague, Mr. Gulo, his opinion that Zoom should be for when you're, I think you said vacationing or sitting by the fire.
That was for the board.
Right, right.
I meant for the public and residents, an ability to use it.
Yeah, Zoom, Zoom was not for sitting by fires, in my opinion, Mr. Gulo. So in terms of the public, what my concern is the exposure of the township when it's not handled properly. And it wasn't handled properly before.
What's with vacationing, Tim?
That... McGrath v. City of Scranton, and I'll be glad to get that to you.
Just a minute. Public Works, which I guess we did, we discussed this.
We discussed that. It's already, that's...
Both of those issues.
Both of those issues have been discussed. In addition to recreation, in your practice, I have an updated quote from, when we get into new business, the computer, township email verbs, supervisor call, supervisor, supervisor position. And that quote is there for you, and I believe I put a fifteen percent, ten percent cost, cost over, just to ensure that we had the proper amount when I went to actually select the approval of such. So I'm asking for approval then of fifty-nine fifty to obtain those three computers to systems.
I did look at those, and I believe there are certainly cheaper options to the tune of over a thousand dollars, essentially cheaper purchasing elsewhere. There's an item or two I don't understand, so I would encourage us to try and save money where we can, and maybe look at some other options. To the extent, excuse me, we do proceed with those, I certainly think it highlights my position that there is a cost of five supervisors. Five computers, five everything, and to me, that cost is expanding, certainly an area of concern. So I think we should see if we can't get anything better priced.
Remember too, though, if we, if we get a better price somewhere, they have to go to systems. They have to put all the security stuff for the township servers and network, right? So there's gonna be a cost involved with that. So again, not being more expensive is what I'm saying, right? I mean, just, now...
Maybe until next month, you could study what my quote was, what my, my...
Okay, what I will say is the headsets that he has on there, get rid of those.
Okay.
You don't need, you don't need a headset. I mean, he has like a soft phone on here. You never use it, right? Like, so, don't, don't put the expense on the headsets, and it's just not necessary. The laptop itself is, a laptop itself is...
Efficient.
Right. So, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, we would have to figure out how much they would charge, or if they even would, if we bring it outside, if we buy it from another source as, as Mr. Whitman is...
Looks like three hundred per item if purchased from that, just right here on the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Three hundred dollar setup fee.
So, okay, three hundred dollar setup fee, so there'll be nine hundred dollars added on top of...
Does that say if not purchased from that?
No, 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 it's, this quote is three hundred per, so nine hundred total.
Right.
So it'll be nine hundred, minimum nine hundred, when they charge.
I'm talking about just the cost of the laptop.
No, no, you're right, but they, like Jess said, are they gonna say five hundred?
Well, you gotta ask the right question. We're talking, we're talking thousands of dollars.
No, 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 that's valid. I mean, that's a good question. I mean, we should, we should at least check it.
I'll agree to that.
And maybe they will.
There's no rush, we say.
The other, the other computer thing is, I mean, I, I don't know how to ask this, but if you could please spell my name correctly, I'd really appreciate that.
Me?
No, whoever does the agenda. I, I mean, I'd just really appreciate it.
Could I, so we'll table the computer part as far as the email address. Go with that, so I can separate this from my personal email. Yeah, I asked about, we'll table computers, but the email address, I think you wanted one as well?
If we're gonna get a computer ultimately, I don't know that that, there's been a lot of, the problem's been worse, Scott, than just an email address. The problem fundamentally has to do with getting information, getting emails, more on that subject later.
Yeah, well, I think my, my, my own computer gave the email address.
Right, right. But thirteen, wasn't thirteen hundred dollars to get that?
What?
How much are they charging us per email address?
I don't think we're... This is totally separate from the computer. My request was, can we get the email address?
I think that, I think that's on here.
It's there, but I've been over my price match for it.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, they have a set number of licenses, so they should have enough for us already. It's just an exchange server, so we can add multiple, multiple email, and maybe that's fine, yeah.
It was all different, it was a different quote than this before, bro.
There was.
That was one of the...
You have a question, George?
Toy Grant, Brightenstein, nine sixty-one Rock Hollow Road. My only point was, like Jess said, there was gonna be a take on it. They're not gonna charge you for the setup, other than going in to set it up. What's it take for five minutes to set up an email?
Oh, the email.
They're definitely gonna charge you more, but you can go through Dell Business to access and get cheaper laptops. And you're still gonna get five years' next business day.
Right.
So...
Yeah, it's an option, I mean, this...
There, there's other options to get it cheaper.
And these are Dell's, so they have, you know, like the... We just had to research it, see, you know, see how much it'll cost for through computers outside somewhere, whether it's through Dell or whatever, and then how much systems net would charge us to set each of them up, right?
Yep.
Just to make sure it's cost efficient.
So with that, I will make a motion to at least activate email addresses for myself, Supervisor Bettler, and I guess Miss Brightenstein, while they're there, just lay all three out, so they're taken care of. I would definitely like to separate the emails from my personal, for what's coming up.
I don't think, Scott, respectfully, emails even before you took the office should have been going to the fire company. I really don't think that's a good procedure.
That's why I asked for it to go to my personal one. That was the email that everyone had prior, that has been addressed and adjusted.
And we have a motion, or a second?
I'll second it.
Call on Mr. Gullough?
Yes.
Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, no, yes. Now, we already picked up B. Right now, at this point, is there any update on C?
Uh, no, that'll be for our red record supervisor workshop meeting as requested.
Okay, then we got our some resolutions to...
Resolutions here for the senior file. That is the resolution that you received previously, that already has the fee schedule attached. If you noted, there was an email sent today to all of you that noted that there were two resolutions that we went back and reviewed that have not been part, excuse me, not two resolutions, two Ps, that have not been part of any resolution previously. One of those was the solicitation. P, however, again, has a question in that email, whether or not that was in fact allowed. The second one was the fee for the alarm system monitoring, or alarm system permit. Again, that is not included in my recommendation. For those would be to put those into your next meeting, since we cannot approve this here. However, to improve the fee schedule as it stands, and we can make the adjustments to February board supervisor workshop.
Does anybody make a motion to accept the resolution for the township fee schedule?
I'll make the motion to accept the township fee schedule resolution.
Now, so the local, Mr. Gullough?
Yes.
Mr. Bettler?
I'll vote no. I don't know that it bears a rational relationship to what were actually, the expenses were actually occurring. I also don't know why this wasn't done as a matter of routine. I'll vote no.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, no, yes. And would I like to make a motion to accept the resolution for the local tax collection hall?
That was already handled at our workshop.
Yeah, that was...
That was already approved.
That was...
Okay, and any update on the cameras?
The only thing I, I'm sure I was making a phone call to ATS to ask them to verify what type of cameras those were, so that we can make the appropriate decisions from there, whether or not they're indoor, outdoor, or combination type cameras, and then we can have a third discussion.
Well, I'm certainly against the removal of those cameras. They were there for a reason. I don't think you informed this board really as to what they were doing or researched that. So I'm, I think that's as much there to protect not only our staff, but also the public. So I'm not sure really why I was doing that.
You would ask to see what they viewed. Did you see that? Did you review that?
I didn't ask to see what?
What that camera showed that were in question?
No, no, I didn't. I was busy reviewing.
All right, we have old business, the manager of Jordan's Springs, and assuming that we knew tonight, and then we got the Gaja questioned about the nomination for the Raiso.
So as far as we can tell by any files we researched, then there is no requirement for it to be a supervisor member. It can be anybody that you nominate and approve for that.
Well, I just sort of vote no confidence from three people up there. And I'm thinking that if they don't have confidence enough to put them on the board, I certainly shouldn't be representing them enough in that board as well. I think it's a sad day, sad day in Robinson Township.
It's a sad day for the, the...
Sad day for the taxpayers and residents of Robinson Township. I would imagine someone does, you might guess. And whoever you appoint, I'll be glad to sit down, let them, let them know what older John's... I, I will sit there until you find a replacement, but...
Well, I guess we gotta put that on the February meeting, and I guess advertise a good...
What, what spurred the, the request of researching on that? What spurred that?
We discussed that, that the...
No, I'm asking what, we discussed it, but what spurred it, initiated it?
The fact that when it got to the point of the reorganization meeting, his name was on the paperwork, and we were wondering if him, if he wasn't...
He wasn't here. Well, just that, I was appointed twice as a supervisor. And it was researched prior to that.
Yes, we just wanted to make sure. All right, I guess we have the executive session here.
We are going into executive session?
Yeah.
Well, we're doing one executive session for movement.
Minor break as well.
Eight oh four.
Need pause, do you need to move on around here? This is a public meeting. No reason to pause it, Mr. Gullough. It's a public, public meeting.
What adjourned is a public meeting, is my question.
All right, it's public. That's where we should go. Transparency.
Did you make a mess again?
Yes, my trunk boots, my feet are wet. It happens.
Did you go in trial?
No, I was out in the snow. You love it. I didn't wear mine like that, okay?
You use your... You just use the floor.
I did not. I used the snow floor, but I still screwed up.
You know, I miss when Don was there because of...
Timberlands, timberlands are great, but they're not, they're just like a pair of...
I did ours this morning.
Well, I expected that Suzie, I was going to take her to work.
I did.
Um, and then she ended up, well, she called Kirsten and said she wasn't gonna be there. Kirsten was her eight o'clock patient, so she called her and said, "I'm not gonna be there." So then she went and she said, "I just gotta be there for nine." I said, "All right." So I had the truck run in, then the office closed, so it was nine o'clock and ten o'clock north of Kansasville. Then they called back after the late, and said, "They can move everybody. You don't have to come in." As the day went on, more people were here. So then I didn't need, I should have left my driveway snow covered for that sleep that we did. Yeah, so I said, "Well, we'll see if they can get up."
Well, it was funny for me because I got out early, I think, yeah, I got out early, and I went back up the stairs without, and then I woke up later and my driveway was plowed. Sonny usually gets it done for me or...
See, I don't, I don't want to ask Sonny or any of them, because my cousins, if any of them goes down over, we got a little, a little cheap. Like, ninety-two, no. So we take it up to the top of the hill, so we plow down. Because what's happening is that work, is everybody tries to come up that driveway, and when they get to the first turn, you don't. If you don't make that turn right, you're gonna go down over the bank, or you're gonna get stuck. So it just makes sense. I don't need Sonny or my cousin getting hurt. Their boat's in their seventies or eighties. Like, yeah, no, I don't want anybody getting hurt.
I figured Win went to work. I heard him snow blow this morning, and I went out shortly.
What, you guys all live, do you live?
I live next, like, two houses down from his daughter.
From my son-in-law.
Kirsten's.
Came from, came from drive, across from Doug's garage.
Oh, see, you're right, okay. No, I know where you're out there, yeah.
And I'm convinced that my son stays in bed until he hears the snow blow or turn off, and then he gets out. No, 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 I just, I figured it out. I figured it out.
Well, what you ought to do is turn it on, leave it run for a while, then turn it off. When he comes out, say, "Hey, did you turn the grid?"
I'll test it next time. No, he wants to know when we're gonna get the tractor, I said, "Who needs more snow?"
Well, he might be getting it for you.
I'm, I'm ready for it, especially if it happens on time, I'll take it.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not thrilled with it because now we've got a business, I've got to plow. You have to drive up and down the driveway. Okay, I can care less now. I have to care. I'd like it the other way. We have to care.
I, I just dread the Amazon guy, Cybers, in the driveway. Inevitably, that will happen. You gotta see it when you drive by, people hang my yard all the time. It's unreal.
So, wait, if I go up, so you're right home from what was Mike Rafe in the Comanche Drive? You're like, okay, so you're, so, when you go back there...
So when you go back there, my father-in-law is the fourth driveway owner, on the fifth driveway owner.
Okay.
And his daughter is the seventh.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Well, then, when you wrap her out, Memory Lane on the other side, Becky Rindi?
Yep.
And then live there, Lucy?
Well, but then also, Scott is in there.
Scott? Yes.
It's his land. He, he's by east of his father-in-law. He's on the...
He's on the other side. He's, he's out from Rindi's front door.
Yeah, they live in the, going into Verge Borough.
They're on Memory, they're on Memory.
No, they're on Caitlin, but it says it wraps around the memory. Well, I never did either, you know?
I didn't have a reason. I went to Rindi's. I just, I liked the name at Memory Lane, because it was four acres and everybody used to get a party there. So it was a very accurate name for it, because there's a lot of memories for anybody who grew up in Verge Borough in the sixties or seventies, or even eighties, that was, we all got in trouble, but everybody would have parties there. So, it was nice when they named it that.
I'm just still pissed at Gary that there's fifty-four Memory Lane and fifty-four Caitlin Drive.
Wait, that creates, that creates a right here.
We're like fifty-four Caitlin tracks, so about once a week, we do a mail exchange with those folks.
Well, we're we're still we're still living there from thirty nine and six Main Street, we know, we have been away from there a year and a month and a half. So thirteen and a half months, we still get mail for Joel's garage, we're jetties on those, so.
Well, uh the guy lived above me, uh the supervisor, and sometimes we exchanged.
Yeah.
Oh, Jeff, Jeff.
Yeah, he's not too long.
Oh, they like to stay long, are they?
What you want that doesn't get wet, what's usually wearing it?
I these are just, they're waterproof, that's the only reason I put them on, my snow boots were.
Oh, wait a minute, my feet are wet from my Timberland, my toes are freezing.
No, I my snow boots were still on the boot dryer, so.
I told my wife that I was going to uh text her when I got the got here, and then I got here a little late, and the meeting was.
That's why she was.
That's why she was calling, she needed to know you weren't down in the snow, right? Oh, and somebody asked about Born Back Down, White Bear, to come out on five sixty eight, I'm like, why would you go that way? I was like, I wanted to say.
Well, I think it's better now that you put that, well, oh, the the.
I I I was gonna ask Jeff what he thought, I think we've been.
I I I I noticed the difference.
Yeah.
Well, I've been sideways on that hill coming to work, it's more than than I cared to remember.
Did you watch, I forget what Facebook it was on, but but somebody posted something about, what if we screw up because the road rides horrible?
Yeah.
That's the way it's intended. I know, I even.
That's that's actually what saved me from going down those.
Yeah, yeah. That's that's the other lanes that you're gonna be doing this year are gonna be double application, how long? Okay, I I I mean, I would rather do less road and make a double application. Especially especially, you know, we get those hot days and that oil comes through and it's slick as can be.
I don't mean it's rude, but putting a motorcycle on those.
Oh, yeah, no, no, this.
And and that's the other thing, he's like, why do you talk on shit, why do you shit? I said, don't ask me, all I know is I was told it was more cost effective, he said. It just splits up where, and the bottom line is, you gotta go back and clean it up, because then, I don't wanna take one, when I know you've chipped, I'm not going on that road with my motorcycle.
So the biggest the biggest thing in my opinion is notification, okay?
I personally think that it's the only way you're gonna get out of this, right?
Oh, wait, 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 we did a deep hole, but we did a deep hole.
Right, right, but and and, you know, ask, ask. They've done this for a while, you know, now, now we've got our own load, you know, you guys can continue your paving, um.
Why why do I see that the state puts that in recourse now? I thought, and some of the older ways that the state does, but she was.
On concrete roads. So I think I think entry, I. That's that's a cold applied product, they call it a cold, it's it's an FB, I think they call it an FB wearing, of course, it's a special thing that they.
Yeah, I I I miss.
That doesn't make sense.
No, I I think that because it's too damn thin, it's, you know, when you put it down on concrete, they put, but our roads, that's gonna crack.
I was gonna say.
Well, that's what I said, I say that we're concrete, yeah.
I don't even like calling to say, hey, you got some really massive holes, but when you were going to the quarry? When you were going up Rock Hallo, those up and down?
Yeah.
But that was horrendous, man, your car, you were in that hole like this, on multiple spots, it's like.
You still have wet spots on that road going up.
The other thing I will do is a two inch away to carry ones. I like to do a leveling and then.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I think I think you'll see that they ride better, if 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 you ride, what do we do, cold run, I think rides better than than uh golf courses.
Yeah.
That that section of golf course, rides like hell.
Of course, it's just plain easy, so many years old, it's been more for so long. I mean, we can fix the problem, even if we can only fix it this much, of this, just this much, just this much, eventually, no.
Well, when Dean was on the board and we had the other roadmaster title up to a job, and he's a he's a quarter mile pass for it. Well, Bob told me I should just do it.
Yeah. Of course.
Two hundred yards more than anyone. Cause I'm only like four hundred yards from Route ten. But I'm like, you know what?
Sometimes we also gonna have to wipe my tons of cities and I come back. Well, you can, but I'm going to.
I know, I know.
I don't, I mean, it's really good, but here's where this, wait.
Well, and let's start with that, like like I said, I, we'll we'll we'll, we looked at it, Ari and I looked at it very closely. You had to answer a lot of questions, they go down about. Um but I think, give it some time, let let us, you know. So the the biggest thing is advanced signage and education, and you know, if you let it go for three weeks, a month, and then clean it up good, you know, let it get run.
You're you're tired, man, you're people know what to expect.
But you got it, you got it, again, it's education, signs out, you know, a couple weeks in advance, this road's gonna be oil and chipped this week, you know, and put the week right on there, you know, so. I saw, I saw, uh, there was.
A client from RZ, who I didn't know from Adam. I looked at his shirt, I'm like, thank you, nice to meet you here.
I tell I tell Gary, I was wondering, let's ask Gary when he's taking South.
He was in the office today and I wasn't, you believe that?
No.
He was, but he won't, he won't.
I don't know, we we can load indoor server for that anyway, he won't do. Well, my my financial advisor is in.
Florida on vacations, but we're gonna have a phone conference tomorrow at ten thirty. I'm gonna move on the stuff around. I'll be kind with this election cycle, so.
It's it would be a shame if Trump passed the law with heart attacks.
I mean, I don't want to say either.
I know, I know, but it's not looking good, you're gonna get one of them.
Well, the diehards, we're literally on Trump.
Look at what happened in the caucus.
Yeah.
I was blown away.
Nice meeting you there.
There were a hundred and eighty thousand vote before, now there was only a hundred and ten.
Yeah.
That's all the vote in it, in Ohio, it was a hundred and ten thousand.
Hell, they had snow that was five degrees below zero.
The Iowa caucus, it was only a hundred and ten thousand people voted.
Well, it was fair, I heard it was freaky. Yes, it was, it's getting colder than it's gonna be here.
I'm not thrilled with the cold to begin with, but yeah, somebody had their shirt, and I had a hat, I I'm like, can you please stop so I can read this? And when I read the back of the shirt, I'm like, I'm gonna love that shirt. So, so it's totally cool, but somebody didn't know.
Yeah, there, remember it.
Yeah, I knew I was wearing it.
Right, and come back into session eight twenty, we need to discuss some new personnel issues, um. Do you need to make a motion to reload guarding personnel?
That's, uh, how does that work for?
Well, it'd be a general, you can, yes, you can authorize the township manager to. Terminate the employees discussing. Make a motion that our township manager, terminate the affiliates discussing executive session.
Does the employee have a name? Is that proper to announce who are terminating?
I suggested what I suggested, you want to do something different?
I'm not figuring what your suggestion is on any of that.
It was just to make a motion that our our manager authorize authorize our manager to terminate the employees discussing executive session. That was his recommendation, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Welcome, Mr. Goel.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Mr. Bettler?
No.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Another yes. Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty one?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Nelson, get an old bear. Let's stop aside.
Yeah, let's do some checks.